Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gaverone.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the regular meeting that was held on June 6th, 2016, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any changes or amendments to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
I have no correspondence.
Thank you. We will move right into our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council, and all assembled. I wish to highlight in my brief report two items which are unfortunate and several items of special commendation. First, as you may have read in yesterday's blade, our Wood County neighbor to the south, the city of Fosteria, has been declared by the state auditor, David Yost, to be in a state of financial crisis. I have written to my friend, Mayor Eric Kechler, to offer him and the members of the Fosteria City Council our combined best wishes as they deal with this terribly troubling set of circumstances. We all know some of the root causes, and we can only hope that the yet-to-be-formed Fiscal Emergency Committee can be successful in finding a way out of this huge dilemma. Second, the decision by the Board of Trustees of Buckeye Boise State to relocate from BGSU to Miami University and the city of Oxford has been deeply troubling, especially the underlying factors for the decision. I wish to publicly thank BGSU President Mary Ellen Maisy, State Senator Randy Gardner, Wendy Chambers of the city's Convention and Visitors Bureau, and all others who helped in an all-out effort to keep Boise State and BG after a 39-year relationship. Given my longstanding ties with Boise State, I can only state, and somewhat selfishly, that the loss of association is huge from a total community perspective. We can only hope that BGSU will be successful in bringing Boise State back to the campus at the end of the five-year contract period. And now for several important commendations as follows. First, to the members of the city's Human Relations Commission, the Leadership of Not in Our Town movement in Bowling Green, and the members of the LGBT community. May I simply underscore our thanks and appreciation for all that you did to heighten community awareness about the horrific event in Orlando, and to remind our fellow citizens about the importance of fighting hate in any form, and to stand tall within the boundaries of law for individual liberties. Secondly, please join with me in congratulating Bowling Green resident and teacher Jeff Wilbarger on receiving the Jefferson Awards Foundation's Top Award for a Private Citizen. The Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis Award recognizes Mr. Wilbarger's dedication to the Daughter Project, a faith-based recovery home he founded in Bowling Green to help victims of human trafficking. Congratulations, Jeff. We are all very proud of your amazing accomplishment and national recognition. Third, congratulations to our outstanding Director of Public Utilities, Brian O'Connell, upon receiving the nationally prominent 2016 Robert E. Roundtree Rising Star Award by the American Power Association at the recent annual meeting in Phoenix, where, Brian, I understand it was maybe a cool 90 degrees, or was it 115? Well, it's good to have you back, and congratulations. That is really fantastic here. It speaks so well, it speaks volumes, if I may use that trite phrase, about our efforts at greater degrees of sustainability. And, Neocles, I've got to be, I know you've worked very closely with Brian, and I know you keep the conversation going in helping us all to move in, in continuing to move in the right direction here in achieving greater degrees of sustainability here in the city of Bowling Green. We can't rest on our laurels. We know we're doing an outstanding job, but we have always a long way to go in this whole area. Fourth, Planning Director Heather Saylor, just returned from the annual meeting of the International Town and Gown Association in Chicago, where she received, on behalf of the BG, BGSU Not in Our Town movement, the second annual, and I don't know how you say this, Heather, but IMPACT, okay, because it's IMP lowercase, basically, and then all caps ACT. I love the ACT, ACT, award, Putting Practice into Action for the Betterment of Communities, the Quality of Life category. So that's a major achievement, it's another outstanding recognition by the National for Not in Our Town. The last one was, of course, by the Not in Our Town movement at a national meeting in Helena, Montana, and this meeting here, recognition by the International Town Gown Association. So congratulations, Heather, to all, and I know that you were working with lots of others there in our community in terms of Not in Our Town. And last, may I commend former Wood County Commissioner and most recently State Representative Tim Brown. I'm being named the next president of TECOG, the Toledo Metropolitan Area Council of Government. As you know, I serve as vice chairman of the TECOG Executive Committee and the Board of Trustees, and I'm delighted to have Tim in this important regional leadership role. I am confident that Tim will excel in succeeding Tolee Reams, who led TECOG for the last 15 years before his well-deserved retirement. And if I may offer just a little PS here before concluding my report, this noon and once again, I had the honor of joining with Wood County officials and others, including Sergeant Doug Hartman of the Bowling Green Police Department. Chief, thank you for making Doug available for this community effort there. In embracing the annual law enforcement torch run on behalf of citizens with developmental disabilities, and to applaud the great work of Wood Lane, today, the annual run which started in Toledo and once again was coordinated by BG resident Dan Van Vories, was officially named in honor of the soon-to-be-retired Superintendent of Wood Lane Melanie Stretchbury, who today became a grandmother for the very first time. So she had a good excuse why she was not at the run today in the race, because her day started with this wonderful news about her first grandchild, I believe it's a granddaughter. So she's thrilled. And, Mr. President, members of council, this ends my report unless you have questions. And I do have one recommendation for your consideration, and just one second. Well, I don't have my papers right here yet. I've got them here, but anybody's Dawn McKay to the city's Traffic Commission, and Dawn has served very faithfully in various roles over the years, representing the east side and in other interests in city government, and she's, of course, was a very active member of the Tree Commission for many years. And so I was able to persuade her to go on the Traffic Commission, for we needed two representatives from the east side. Kent Strange was recently appointed, in fact, at the last meeting, and now I'm asking that Dawn McKay be appointed, and for your consideration. She's really outstanding, and one of the reasons that really helped me in persuading Dawn is that she's been really, I won't say outspoken, but very thoughtful in her raising questions about the movement of traffic and pedestrian concerns on East Worcester Street. And she's paid attention to the study, the land use study, and of course, the traffic impact study that's been done, the pedestrian impact study, I should say. And I know she has some good ideas, and I think this will be very good to have her strong voice and her good mind on the city's Traffic Commission. So thank you for your consideration, Dawn.
Other questions for the mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to add with respect to Orlando, we had over 300 people come out at the vigil. I was very impressed with the turnout and the fact that we had yourself, Mr. Mayor, and Dr. Mary Ellen Maisy, and most of city council there with us. I was happy to be there, and I think it's important, particularly since they're here, that we have two of the chief organizers for the Orlando vigil, Gwen Andricks and Amy Jo Holland, here tonight, so I'd like to ask us to give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Daniel. That's very thoughtful, and of course, I really appreciate the chance to speak at the outset of that wonderful gathering there. The conditions were not ideal because of the threat of a storm, and fortunately, you were able to get outside, and I thought that was really neat there, but it was kind of a tough go there in the basement of the First Presbyterian Church, but thank goodness we had that option there to go there, and it really helped out a great deal. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the mayor? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the appointment of the Traffic Commission as presented by Mayor Edwards?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes, the appointment is approved as presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Assistant Municipal Administrator, Mr. Fawcett, this evening.
Good evening. Lori Treter is out this week, so I'm doing my best to fill her shoes. We had a meeting last week regarding the fireworks display for Independence Day. Those are going to be held July 3rd, beginning at dusk. The firing point will be the same as last year, off the intermural fields at BGSU. The only real change to the fireworks is going to be that Doyt Perry Stadium will be off limits due to construction, so BGSU cannot let people in. The traffic plan following the fireworks display remain the same. On June 28th, we're going to have information displays up at downtown BG for the parking kiosks that are planned to go into parking lot number two. City staff and downtown BG staff are going to be available for question and comment at 10:00 AM, 2:00 PM, and 6:00 PM. Chief Hetrick has announced that on June 29th, they're going to hold the next Coffee with a Cop in conjunction with BGSU Police Department. That is from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM at Big B Coffee. And finally, the auction for items to be auctioned off from the city is going to be held on Wednesday, June 22nd, beginning at 4:00 PM from the Public Works Garage. And, Mr. President, pending anybody's question, that concludes my report.
Questions for Mr. Fawcett? Very good. Thank you, sir. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. Well, Mayor took some of my glory with the award, but that's his job, so we want him to do that. So I returned from the International Town Gown Association, and I will give you a report, basically a summary of the sessions I attended, which, you know, anytime you go to this conference, it's very exciting because it's all about town and gown and working together, just a lot of energy, a lot of great ideas, and of course, getting an award is just the topping on the Sunday, and I brought the award with just because it's special. I guess we're going to share this between the university and city, because again, this truly was a collaboration between both organizations, which is why we received this award, which that's what Town and Gown is about. And also, we received $500 that went directly to the Not in Our Town Bowling Green account, which is really exciting for us because we operate with zero dollars, so anytime we get a donation or that type of award, we're really excited about that. But I want to tell you too, I did hear from the mayor of Chicago at the conference, which was really exciting. He is an excellent speaker, and I will again do a report about that. I also got my picture with the mayor of Jackson, Mississippi. He is a young, energetic mayor. He was absolutely amazing, so I'm looking forward to sharing some of that information. But again, the award is really important to Bowling Green, and I think the goal of NIOT BG is perfect for us because, again, it's not only about being reactive, we're trying to be proactive. So I think we're here, we're doing well, and I think this award validates what we're doing. We had 108 nominations to the ITGA, so if that tells you that there were three award winners out of 108, we're doing very well, and it validates our work. So again, really excited about that, and I want to thank the community for all their support. The next conference will be in Eugene, Oregon, which is home of University of Oregon, so next year in 2017, that'll be an interesting conference to attend. It's the first one on the west coast for the ITGA. Also wanted to let you know, everybody's eager to hear about our neighborhood consultant. We did actually come to agreement with Cameros. They are out of Chicago ironically, where I just was, and we think they are, really have an excellent resume, excellent experience. They did a really great presentation with our committee, and we were very impressed by them. So we are looking forward to getting started with them in July. The timeline is approximately 14 months is what we've discussed with the consultant, but again, that could be quicker, it could be slower, it just depends what happens with that timeline. Our agreement is $98,300, and that will be part of the planning department budget into this year and into 2017, so just want to let you know that. Otherwise, really excited, they are nationally recognized with community planning, neighborhood planning, land use regulations, economic development, landscape architecture, and urban design, and they're known for implementing. So they're not the kind of company that they want to do a plan, make this huge investment, and sit on the shelf, so really excited about that, and we will keep you informed on that process. So that is it, unless you have any questions.
Heather, really quickly, just, I wanted to say thank you for updating us on the progress of that. Could you tell us how to spell the name of the?
Sure. It is C-A-M-I-R-O-S. And I do have the proposal with me if you'd like to review that.
Oh, that would be great, thank you.
Also wanted to let you know, I did give you a packet about the conference, so you could read more about the award as a side note, and we had over 300 people at that conference, just so you know a little bit about the background.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Heather, do you know offhand if Not in Our Town is a growing organization nationally?
I would say definitely. I think it's growing in the respect that I think Not in Our Town Bowling Green has given a new model to college town campuses. We actually get contacted on a fairly regular basis when there is a concern on a college campus, you know. How is NIOT BG handling the situation, or what tools can they provide and what people? And we actually have a conference call Thursday with the national organization about how people are handling the incident in Orlando, you know, how are people's responses, what are they doing? And so we tend to be the leaders that the national NIOT look to for answers and suggestions, so it's really exciting to get Bowling Green on the map.
Great. Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley. Kristin's not with us this evening? Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you.
The Rising Star.
Thank you.
Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Before I let you begin, thanks again, Brian, for all your work, and congratulations on your award, it's certainly much deserved.
Thank you. Well, you know, having a great staff also goes a long way to getting things done, so I do want to thank the utility staff for all the things that they do that makes my job much easier. With this award, APPA grants a $2,000 scholarship for me to go to a conference throughout the next year or so, to learn about new things, talk to different utility managers across the country, and it's humbling, and I was very appreciative to receive that award, it was very nice. While I was at the conference, just so you know, I did give a presentation as part of a panel of speakers that talked about energy efficiency programs that we have, and so my part of it was to talk about how we utilize energy efficiency to promote economic development within Bowling Green. You know, obviously, the mayor and Lori and myself, we go to talk to a lot of the industrial customers each year, and so we always, along with Sue Clark, and we always remind them that we have this energy efficiency program that's at their fingertips, they just have to make the phone call and reach out, and we can get them in touch with our technical expertise. So Christine Donovan, she's from a company called VEIC, who is our consultant that we use through AMP, and then also Kevin Maynard, he's from the city of Hamilton, he was here as Utilities Director many years ago, or a couple of years ago, I guess. He also talked from the city of Hamilton's perspective, where he now works, how they use Energy Efficiency Program for the city of Hamilton. Outside of that, on the water plant side, we have changed out all of the reverse osmosis media. That part of the membrane plant is what's used to take out the micro system, the other nasties that are in the water on the membrane side. It was at the end of its five-year life cycle, so that's about the timeframe that we would change that out, so that was done this last month. And then we also have in the budget to replace all of the green under activated carbon on the conventional treatment plant side. We usually would do six per year out of the 12, that's half. This year, we budgeted to do all of the GAC, we already did six back in May, and we're looking to do the other six in July, August timeframe. And again, the reason for that decision was the lower reservoir levels we have, we think we may have some harder issues to deal with for the algae in the reservoir, and so we think we're prepared to combat any potential issues we may have in our raw water source. That's all I've got, unless you have any questions.
Brian, I have a quick question regards to the solar project. As I recall, once council approved that, there was intent to start construction on that, I think, early June. Can you update us on that process?
Yeah, we have talked about, well, the development is still in process. I'm not sure if they're going to get in here before the end of June, but probably first part of July, they'll get out there to start construction. I can get you a better update here yet this week. We have talked to the, worked with AMP, as well as the contractor and the engineer on the 69 KV circuit that's going to be constructed out to the site. We had a meeting this past week, late last week, about getting some preliminary plans in our hands to look at and to review, and those should be coming here to us hopefully by Wednesday. We should have, say, a 30% review set we can look at. So plans are progressing, we are looking forward to that kicking off. The plan is still for it to be operational by the end of this year, I don't see that changing at this point.
Thank you. Additional questions for Brian?
Thanks.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Everybody's talking about awards, and I get to talk about trash, so. Down at South Main and Gypsy Lane, we had bid an intersection improvement project, and Gettys Paving Excavating was the contractor for that. We're looking at July 18th start date down there. That will add a left turn lane on the Gypsy Lane side, the east Gypsy Lane side, the street name signs that we're accustomed to on the other sections of town, battery backups, the new pedestrian signals, LED signals with the black signal heads. Once we get closer to that date, we'll give you some more information. There is a time period where east Gypsy Lane can be closed for the contractor to do work. We've been talking with the businesses and people that live down there to let them know it's coming. A lot too, that Joe alluded to, Public Works is still in there doing some conduit installation. This will allow the telecommunications to be pulled and the power to the kiosk. Want to get those in the ground, obviously, before the parking lot gets paved, so Francis hears this paving out there in July, will be right next door with Shelley Company sometime after the 4th of July. We like to turn that over to Shelley to get that done in July, try and get the kiosk installed as they come in over a period of time, and hopefully by mid-August, get that turned back loose. The nice thing about the parking lot, when it's all said and done, with the lack of meters and the lack of bumper blocks, especially for the festival, will be the fewer trip hazards during the festival and less work for us to take all that out, put it back, year in and year out, and it'll be a much cleaner parking lot, so. Last, I got a gentleman here who's a site from I.S.O.R.I.S., City Arbrist, Grant Jones, if you want to step up here, sir. Of course, we all know Dave Beaman went on to Hamilton. Grant went through several periods of interviews with us, first over the phone, and then he stopped by in person, and we really think Grant's going to take over and move things forward. I also say that Mike Hammer and Dave's absence kind of bailed me out. We had a lot of trees get planted this spring, and Mike kept things going until Grant got on board. Grant started on May 31st, so Grant Jones started with the city of Bowling Green, and we're real glad to have him if you want to say a few words.
I'm excited to be here and be a part of Bowling Green. I've heard for a long time about your commitment to trees, and so it's exciting to be here and be a part of that, and this is the start of week four. The last three weeks, I kind of spent just driving through town, seeing the different areas and taking a look. Excited to be here.
Great.
Some drive and look at trash receptacles, and others drive.
Welcome to Bowling Green, Grant. We're really happy to have you, thanks.
That's my report. If you have any questions, I mean.
Questions for Mr. Kraft?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That concludes our official reports. We will now move forward on the agenda with the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have a resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2017. I have an ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment, and I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03, subsection A, of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer.
Thank you, Bob.
President?
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, I have an ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 6.20 acres of land in center township, Wood County, Ohio, from Stephen M. and Marcia L. Subert petitioners. I have an ordinance establishing interim zoning of R1 Single Family Residential for approximately 6.2 acres of land located on the south side of Napoleon Road, between 1502 and 1518 Napoleon Road, recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Stephen and Marcia Subert. And an ordinance amending and adopting Section 150.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding zoning code definitions and declaring an emergency. And for these last two items, I will need a public hearing. I think we can do it on August 1st, and I think we should go at 6:45.
Great. Thank you, Bruce. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President. From the Community Improvement Committee, we had a meeting tonight to further our discussion of refuse collection in terms of regulation with revisions in Chapter 94, and I think at this point, it's fair to say that we've been listening to citizen input, we're hoping to receive more of it, and we're hoping to do further research with other community officials, and hopefully have something to present to council at the end of our next meeting on the subject.
Great. Did you want to schedule that next Community Improvement Committee meeting?
Yes. Kay, are we free at 6:00 PM on July 5th?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to schedule it for then. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Did you say 6:00 PM?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Additional council committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we move forward, and our agenda is a lobby visitation. At this point, we welcome anyone in attendance this evening to address council on any item that might be on our agenda or any other item of business pertaining to the city of Bowling Green. If you are interested, we ask you to first approach the microphone, clearly state your name and address for the record. So at this point, I would ask if there's anyone interested, please.
My name is Gwen Andricks. I live at 480 Lehman Avenue, and I thank you all for your kind words and recognition tonight, but that really isn't why I was here. My point in being here was to recognize the mayor and city council for your presence and support throughout the year. It's very meaningful. Myself, as a transgender woman, I feel safe in Bowling Green. I feel like I can go and be safe anywhere in the town, and I'm pretty much accepted. It's a nice place to be, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
In the emotion of the moment. Without NIOT, Not in Our Town, our event would not have been possible. We started, the event started as my single vigil at Four Corners and became an organic pursuit to have the vigil on Wednesday night, and when we approached Not in Our Town, they helped us immensely in pulling off the whole thing, and I thank you.
Well, Daniel Gordon said he wanted more input. Well, Daniel Gordon said he wanted more input on the issue of placement of trash containers, so let me add my voice to those who've been arguing for some limitations being placed on the location of trash cans. Now, the land use plan, which was approved two years ago, addresses the city's need to enhance the quality of residential life. This is essential for attracting and retaining permanent residents. To achieve that end, the update lists among its goals the following. Quote, "To enhance aesthetics of existing neighborhoods, to create positive first impressions, to improve livability and aesthetics." The proposed limitation on the placement of trash containers is a straightforward and simple means of taking one step toward the realization of the land use plan goals. An examination of the trash can policies of other cities, something that was explored at length at the Community Improvement Committee meeting a month ago, indicate that restrictions on the trash can placements are common. There's one reason, obviously, for this. It's a matter of aesthetics. Residential neighborhood is enhanced when trash containers are not visible from the street. Certainly, no one would argue the opposite, that trash cans in front of houses enhance neighborhood aesthetics. The council will likely be called upon in months ahead to undertake some very difficult steps to fulfill the goals of the land use update. Unfavorable action on this proposal would certainly be very discouraging. Hence, I simply urge that council consider the broader interests of the city as it acts on this proposal. This step can help fulfill the goals of enhancing aesthetics, of creating positive first impressions, and improving livability. Moving forward on this proposal will be an encouraging step toward a fuller realization of the land use plan's vision for Bowling Green.
Thank you, Gary.
My name is Jenny Stewart, and I had no intention of getting up here tonight, but after listening to Gary, oh, I should say that I'm a resident here in town at 1249 Brownwood Drive, and I also have another address. It's 133 South Main Street, where I have my business here in town. And while I agree with everything that Gary said, this is bigger than just the residence, it is also what the businesses are trying to portray within our community. And a good first impression is important when we are trying to get people from other communities to not just shop in Perrysburg, or not just go to Findley, or Mommy, or the malls. It's to bring visitors to our community. And the other day, I did a drive down South Street, and I did a drive up to the north. And we have many residences with not only dilapidated conditions, if I can paraphrase you, John, slumlike conditions, but we have trash cans. And sometimes they're full, sometimes they're not. They're most often left out. Many times, there are bottles left over from parties with trash strewn all over the neighborhoods. And what I'm trying to attract, as is Coyote Beads and the other businesses in town, people from Sylvania, Ottawa Hills, Michigan, Columbus, Fremont, Findley. What kind of an image are we sending to these people? That we're complacent, and that we don't have pride in this community? I look around this room, and it's obvious that we all have pride in this community. But is it the message that we're sending to get people to come in and patronize our businesses? It's hard enough to be a small business, and if we, as a community, are not sending the message that we care, what are we saying? So, I would ask you to not only consider this from a residential standpoint, which I do care about because I am a resident, but also, how is this going to help businesses when you make these changes to the trash can ordinance? I know it seems like a small thing, but it's a very big thing for those of us that are in business as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the images. I need the mouse to be able to manipulate the images, and I'm not sure how to do this. I'm Lori Young. I live at 325 North Prospect. And after listening to Jenny and Gary and how eloquent they are, I feel like I'm more or less going to be a commercial, so bear with me. I just want to point out again, I stood up here before talking about the trash containers in front of the houses, and I came to the meeting earlier tonight, the committee improvement meeting, or the community improvement meeting, and they were talking about, John particularly was talking about a discussion maybe about a nuisance violation, and this one seems to be near and dear to my heart. These photographs were taken today. These are the same photographs, may I remind you, for those of you who were not here maybe five weeks ago, that is still there. So, this is the house that's over there across from our beloved courthouse. Here is the side of the house, and you can see the garbage that is on the porch, and you can see the containers on it. I also want to point out that the house has excessive broken windows, and I don't know how those are being addressed at all. I'm not sure how to do that with the code violation or what have you, but they've tried to conceal them. But I do have many more photographs for anyone who might be interested in that. Here's the back of the house. It's not visible from the street, but you can see that it's not only the trash containers, but there's a lot of extra refuse there. And then, of course, here's the other angle, which is visible. These are all visible, by the way, from the street going, heading east, and I think it's, what is it, oak, maybe? All right. And then, here we have the house next to it, and the picture of the porch, another very happy house, many broken windows. And here's the view from the backyard. And again, this has been there for weeks now. And here is what people would say, you know, again, Jenny brought it up, and I really appreciate this, because I was going to bring it up. You know, when people are walking, we've increased the traffic, the walking traffic in the downtown area. I walk a lot, and I bike a lot. And this is, I bring this up because this is how, it seems like it's not something that you can see, but when you're looking, and you're walking your dog, and you're with other people, you can see this. You look right through the alley there, and right through there is this apartment, and this is the, well, let me go to this picture. There's the stuff that's there, again, that has been there for over a month and a half now. And so, I would think that, I know that it was brought up, that when people put a pyramid of garbage in their garbage can, and it sits there, of course, somebody said, "Well, I'm not going to go up," and I understand that, I wouldn't want to either for fear of retribution, but nobody's going to go up and tell them that they should not have their garbage exposed like that. But this is where we get problems with cats, and rats, and other vermin. And this is, not only people say that they don't want to put garbage cans in their garage because they don't want to have the smell, I have the smell when I'm walking my dog. All right? I also want to point out again, thank you, Jenny, for saying this, again, businesses, and this is something that just popped up, and I will guarantee you, this came, became noticeable, or was positioned here because of the one that is now here and has been here for over seven or nine months now on the other side of Court, Church Street. And so, now, this is on oak. And so, what happens is, and this is probably just human behavior, someone sees that someone can do this, doesn't know that there's a grandfather clause or something, and goes ahead and does it because they saw somebody else do it. And that tends to be a kind of an issue, especially, of course, with the college students. So, I bring these to your attention because it's every week, and some of these are nuisance because they're continual. They're, some of them are rental, some of them are private. It's not being addressed in some manner. It needs to be addressed in some kind of, you know, code or code enforcement, policing. I don't have the answer. I'm asking city council, I'm asking for people who have authority within the city to take a serious consideration to this, because it's someone like me that purchased two homes in this community. I have two homes here, and I live here, and I love this community. I teach here. I ask people to move here because the values of the community and the people in the community are whole, and wonderful, and dynamic, and interesting, and are about growth and integrity. And it's interesting to me that some of the laws and the ordinances that we have in place do not reflect this. And it's surprising, especially when we're looking at all these communities around us that are usurping us with these kind of things that don't have the integrity that we do. And I would like to see it be reversed. Thank you.
Lori, could you go back to that picture of the yellow house, the second or third picture?
Yes, I can, provided this little, yes, we go.
Go forward a couple, to where the cans are in back. Go forward. That's good. So, if we had the rule that the cans had to be out of sight, now, they're in the back of the house there. They moved them around to what would be the north side of that house, it'd still be in sight from, I guess that'd be Prospect Street. Do they have a garage at that house?
They, I do not know. There is, behind the parking lot, they have a very, the two houses, and I didn't bring those pictures because I didn't know how much time, and I didn't want to, you know, bore everyone to tears, but they have 12 lots for parking for the two houses, and it's together. And then, behind them, there's structures, but I don't know if they're owned by that house. And my point is, is that the garbage cans here are out of sight, but it's, again, this pyramid effect. What else is with it? What else is added there? I also didn't include the many houses that I still have that have, we have mattress issues. We still have, you know, what do you call, utilities, like a washer and dryer. We have a lot, we have a new, you know, this is an interesting phenomenon, which I have no idea how to address this. We have two places that have pickup trucks that are loaded with garbage, garbage bags, garbage, garbage. We also have this wonderful thing about a number of televisions that are around the community that are by the buildings that continue to be out there. And they're there because they're not being addressed in some manner. And I'm not interested in being, you know, overtly aggressive. What I'd like to be able to do, or like to be able to have the city do, is to inform them that these things cannot stay, give them a period of time to clean it up, and if they don't, then they get perhaps a ticket, a fine, whatever means that people think could be terribly not hostile, but yet to the point, so that, again, we can move in a more positive direction. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Good evening. I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as you are, but I wanted to follow you nonetheless. I'm Matt Bostor from South Maple Street, Ward 3, representing. I kind of wanted to tag along on to what you said, and it reminds me of an analogy that I use often from a movie with Jennifer Aniston and Vince Vaughn called The Breakup. And in that movie, there's a point where they're fighting and arguing, and Vince Vaughn's playing video games, and Jennifer Aniston comes in the room, and they start screaming at him. He's like, "What? What do you want me to do? You want me to do the dishes? I'll do the dishes." And she says, "I don't want you to do the dishes. I want you to want to want to do the dishes." Do you get what I'm getting at? So, when you start looking at these properties, and you're wondering, why are people not picking up their trash? Why are they not trimming their bushes? So, I think the point becomes, how do we get people to want to want to do those things because they're a part of something bigger, right? They're a part of something that they believe in. It also reminds me of an analogy when we talk about the natural competition, frankly, of other neighboring cities and districts, right? Two guys are running through the woods, they're hikers, and they're being chased by a bear. At one point, one guy stops, starts putting on his running shoes. The other guy stops and says, "You really think those running shoes are going to allow you to outrun the bear?" And he says, "I don't have to outrun the bear." Do you get what he's saying? He doesn't, all he has to do is outrun the next people. So, we're competing with the people in Perrysburg, and Fostoria, and Fremont, and so forth. We don't have to be the best city in the nation, which I believe we, I mean, I'm a little biased, but I think we do pretty well. But from a competitive standpoint, when people are coming to northwest Ohio trying to find a place to live, I want them to come to Bowling Green and go, "What's up? This is where it's at." These people obviously care about what's going on in their community, and it's evident by just driving around. There's a lot of curb appeal. And I think that's something that we lack a little bit, and that was just, I just wanted to make that point, is that maybe if we just did a little bit better job of enforcing the, and I apologize because it's going to sound like I'm zinging Heather, and she's sitting right in front of me, and I don't mean to do that. If we could figure out a way to better enforce the rules and codes that are already in place without offending people, if we could figure out a way to do that, either, be it by stick or by carrot, or both, to get people to adhere to the rules, I think we would see a natural improvement. And I'm also up here sort of advertising. I'd like to be a part of that solution and not just, you know, be complaining. If there's a way I can get involved in that, I'd welcome any information. I'm new to this game, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I want to add a comment to that. I thought Matt was maybe going to go in a little different direction, and it's something I've been thinking about for a couple days. Your comments are good, too, but maybe I'm too optimistic about this. Would you like to? Oh, sure.
Hi, this will be very brief. My name is Steve Doyle. I live at 1047 Lindenwood Lane. I want to follow up on Lori's comment, and she mentioned specifically TVs sitting out alongside the houses. One of the things that is true is people don't know how to get rid of them. They're toxic. You can't take them to the dumpster. It would be great if the city could do something to advertise the fact that Staples will take that stuff off your hands for free. They send it to a recycling center, they strip out the toxics, they strip out the semi-precious metals. The fact that there is someplace to go with these would give people a way to go and get them out of the way. All they have to do is get them in the car. So, and a lot of people don't know that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, maybe my comments really directed to Daniel and your committee. Just another approach is, we certainly have to look at enforcement of rules and how we might want to change that, but I think a lot of people just take a lot of pride in their property, and so, we might work that angle a little bit, where we're not just looking at the enforcement aspects, but we're looking at fostering a little more sense of the need to improve properties. Again, a lot of people just do that naturally, but we might think of a program or a push that encourages that, a little more carrot to go along with whatever stick we come up with.
I mean, I think that's right. I mean, one of the, I think for many properties where we see these problems, at least part of the issue is that the folks living there, and maybe the folks taking care of the properties, they're just not as invested in the Bowling Green community as arguably they should be, and as arguably the rest of our homeowners happen to be. So, I think if we can figure out a way to build that sense of civic investment, I think we'll be farther along that path moving forward that we want to take. So, thank you, Bruce.
Other others would like to speak with council this evening? Seeing none, we move forward on the agenda to the reading of legislation. Thank you all for your comments this evening.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3630 for first reading. Resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2017. Ordinance number 8521 for first reading. Ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment. Ordinance number 8522 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 150.03 of the codified ordinances of the city Ordinance amending and adopting section 33.03A of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer. Ordinance number 8523 for first reading. Ordinance accepting annexation of approximately 6.2 acres of land in center township Wood County, Ohio from Stephen M. and Marcia L. Subert petitioners. Ordinance number 8524 for first reading. Ordinance establishing interim zoning of R1 single-family residential for approximately 6.2 acres of land located on the south side of Napoleon Road between 1502 and 1518 Napoleon Road, recently annexed to the city as petitioned for by Stephen and Marcia Subert. Ordinance number 8525 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section 150.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding zoning code definitions and declaring an emergency. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3629 for second reading. Resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit laws as codified, 49 U.S.C. section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas, and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contract grant for the fiscal year 2017, Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval. Ordinance number 8519 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to accept a utility easement from Meyer Distribution Incorporated. And there is no legislation for third reading.
Thank you, Kay. That completes the items on our agenda for this evening. Are there any other, is there any other business to come before council this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming this evening.